Fun.
There are attendees are coming in.
Ben, you're gonna, you're gonna start us off?
Yeah, just give me the.
I know Dodgers start at 5:08.
Or giant scans around here, right? I think we can get going. Yeah.
Ready? Hello. My name is Ben Hornstein and I'm the General Manager of Marin Water. I wanted to welcome everyone and thank you for taking the time to join this evening. This is our second webinar and we are planning to continue this a bit. In regards to the drought, the first one we did focused on the demand management side and conservation and shared where we are in terms of supply and what conservation initiatives we have in place and where we're headed. And we did receive very good positive feedback from many folks that attended. In that they liked the format. It was less casual than a typical board meeting, of course. And we were really able to engage back and forth and I'm hopeful the same thing occurs tonight. When we're going to be focusing on the supply side of the equation, right? So you have water supply, you have the demand, the consumption and all the efforts to conserve that and reduce demand in times of a drought. And tonight we're going to talk about supply augmentation and some of the efforts and projects we're looking at the status. And I certainly know there's a lot of questions out there on many fronts and we're going to answer them. We're going to answer all the questions. And we're scheduled from five to seven, but I will be here. Not speaking for everyone, but I will be here until all your questions are answered. That's the intent of this and that's what we want to do. So what we're going to be doing now is going to two brief presentations, one just to give you the latest status on our supply situation. And then go to talk about the projects of supply augmentation, bringing in additional supply during the severe drought. What we are asking you to hold questions until we get through these presentations are fairly brief because the intent in this is to hear from you and answer your questions. So without, I'll turn it over to Lucy Croy, who's going to give us a presentation on the status of our supply.
Good evening. Thank you, Ben. I am Lucy Croy, the Water Quality Manager, and I'm going to bring up a few slides. Okay, so tonight, we're going to start off this drought webinar with first an overview of the water supply and then move into, as Ben mentioned, Paul Selya, our Operations Director, is going to give an overview of supplemental water supply and then end with a Q and A session. So first up, a, an overview of kind of our, our most recent supply update on our storage, amount of storage we have in our reservoirs through the middle of October. We're just above 25,000 acre feet and for some of you that, that may be a very obscure unit acre feet. But for us, really what that translates to is about 32% of our total capacity. So typically for this time of year, we would, we would be much higher up here on this, this dark line up here would be closer to around 53, 54,000 acre feet. And right now we're at a historic low for us at around 25,000 acre feet. And as you'll notice down here on the red, there's a, a lower line in the 1976, 77 drought, we were, we were quite a bit lower, but at that time we had a little bit less storage in our, in our system. So we, we had one less reservoir and we also had half the capacity in one of our largest reservoirs. So we have a bit of a different system at this point that we've been able to expand and whether some of the drought since then. So the current rain forecast that was projected starting on Tuesday was to get about two or three inches with this first rain that kind of came through, through Friday or Saturday. And so far what we've seen is about just, just over four inches, I'd say. Out, out on the Mount Tam watershed and at our Lake Lagunitas rainfall cage. So we're very excited to see that and see that the watershed getting a little bit of rain and, and you know, decreasing the fire risk out there. Through Sunday and Monday, there's actually a bigger storm that's forecasted and we expect up to three or four inches, an additional three or four inches that could come through. And that's one of those atmospheric rivers that are projected coming through the San Francisco Bay area. And it's, it's been a while since we've seen one of those. The last one we had was last January and unfortunately that one missed our system a bit, but this one we're hoping comes in and adds quite a bit of water to our reservoirs. So in October, we typically, looking back through our historical records, we typically see about 2.6 inches of rain, but it really varies. This, this first month of the rainy season can really be very wet or very dry. Some years we've seen almost no rain. So last year we had almost nothing and then other years we, we see almost 10 inches or more. So far with this storm, we've, we've had just over four inches and so that's quite a bit actually more than our average at this point. So we're happy to see that and kind of frame that in perspective. One question that's come up quite a bit with this drought is, is really, you know, how much rain is it going to take us to get out of this drought? And for us, our watershed is primarily fed by rainfall runoff. So one interesting figure that, that the Department of Water Resources, California Department of Water Resources has come out with is that their, their models are estimating about 140% of average rainfall is needed to produce average runoff. So because watersheds are very dry over the last two years, we're actually going to need more rainfall in order to produce the same amount of runoff from watersheds kind of soaking up that, that first initial batch of, of rain. So for us, what that really translates to in our watershed, if, if we do take that 140% at its word, that October average would be about 3.6 inches, which we've already exceeded it. And then over the whole water year, so this October to the end of September water year, that'd be about 73 inches. So 140% of our typical. And there's a few years in the, in the past that we've actually exceeded that, that we have received just about 73 inches. Probably most recently, you can remember 2019 was quite a wet year as well as 2017. And then there was quite some large storms back in 2006, especially in Marin County. So we see it here and there and we're hoping that we can still kind of catch up and fill our reservoirs with that rain. And tying, tying that 140%, how that, if we were to get the 140% of rainfall and then tie that to average runoff, where would that take us next year? And we've put together a few projections showing that, you know, through the, through the next spring, we would be up near around 55,000 acre feet, which is still a little bit lower than our average, but it would put us in a much more comfortable position going forward. And then also here I've got a, a dash line and that's really showing, so the dash line is showing the projection and the solid line is showing the, the impact of conservation savings. So the 20% conservation savings that we've started to see very regularly produced by our customers at this point. The call right now is for 40%, but for a projection sake, we're, we're using a 20% to be a little bit more conservative and understand, you know, where, where would we sit come March or next June? And then in the upcoming months, we've been monitoring NOAA and some of the other forecast agencies. So as some of you may heard, the Alanya has been forecasted and actually already started just, I think this past week or so, they've, they've said there's a 87% chance of Alanya for December through February. And there's a bit of a confusion about what that means necessarily for us and for Northern California. For Southern California, it, it really does mean typically dry, dry conditions. But in Northern California, it, it really ends up being equal chances for a wet or a dry winter, especially when we look back at our historical record. And then over on the right, I've updated this, this chart. This is one of the most recent NOAA predictions that they've put out just today, looking at the, they're calling it weather 2021, so through February. And showing that right now there's a little bit of a below normal percentage probability that it'll be below average precipitation kind of in the Northern California Bay Area at this point. But it's an ever moving target and we're continuing to monitor and adjust based on this. And then time is to really what our call to our customers are right now is the, the 40% target to reduce and really reduce where you can can in your, in your life. So reducing outdoor irrigation as well as indoor irrigation, indoor use, excuse me. And you know, what we've seen is, is week over week, about a 24% weekly reduction and cumulative since May, when we declared a water shortage emergency, 22%. So cumulative 22% conservation. So that really goes back to that projection and showing that that's about what we've been able to achieve over the last few months. So hopefully we'll continue that trend going forward. And at this point, I'm now going to hand off to Paul Selya, who's going to give an update on our supplemental supplies.
Okay, thanks Lucy. So evening folks. Paul Selya, I'm the Operations Director here at Marin Municipal. Struggling to operate my PowerPoint. Here we go. So supplemental water supply options. Some of this material was, was presented at the recent board retreat. And it covers a fairly broad scope of supplemental supply options. So, so hopefully there'll be a little bit of everything in here. We'll start off just with a very brief review of short-term options. That's sort of, what do we, what are the options that could be used in, in response to the drought? And then we'll take a little bit deeper look at, at long-term water supply options. And then what opportunities exist for us regionally and then look at some next steps. So short-term, right? If there were good, easy, simple options, this would be, you know, almost fun. But it's not that there aren't any ideal options and we've got to continue our focus on demand management. As Lucy was saying, we had some really good success over the course of the summer. And I, I think when we compare ourselves to other Bay Area agencies, we're really close, if not at the top in terms of success in our demand management program. We've been working with Sonoma County Water Agency or Sonoma Water and they've come up with an intriguing concept with respect to winter water, which would allow us perhaps with regulatory approval and appropriate collaboration to obtain a little more water than normal during the winter. Desalination, we've been looking at in the context of a temporary facility. And as we look at it and discover the nature of the permitting and the complex operation in conjunction with an EnerTy project makes this really a very challenging option for us to pursue. So we'll talk a little bit about that and then of course a brief update on the EnerTy. So as we look at, at water supply long-term, this slide kind of, we could just sort of stop here and spend the whole next 10 minutes talking about this slide. But really five main areas from water reuse, expansion of storage, EnerTy's desalination and then sort of the creative areas that, that may be new and developing or just interesting. So we'll talk, I don't think about every single one of these, but we'll, we'll certainly get through a few of them. The innovative concepts and we've all heard folks talk about fog harvesting and it is a very neat technology to be sure. The study that I've read indicated it might be a gallon per square meter per day. And when you translate that out to municipal scales of, you know, multiple millions of gallons needed per day, it, it'd be really tough to, to see that working out on a municipal scale. For a very small scale, it might be an ideal solution. Reducing, we, we have four main reservoirs that are sort of production reservoirs and, and seven in total. So shade evaporation of the, in, in the reservoir system can, can be 4,500 acre feet per year. So if we were able to reduce that evaporation, as shown here, rather maybe optimistically by 3,600 feet by introducing shade balls to a reservoir or multiple reservoirs. And of course there are impacts associated with this that you could start to see how it might impact a reservoir ecosystem. And, and just not be viable for natural reservoir systems that we have. But it is still an interesting idea. And then watershed management, this is the idea where there are certain species of trees on the watershed that are thirstier than others. And, and so removal, selective removal of those could be done. And, and you could obtain some theoretical yield. And of course cloud seeding's been around for quite a while. Though, though it's still an interesting technology and there are some agencies that have fixed cloud seeding towers up in the mountains and they just load them with rockets and, and, and they produce water that way. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties. So cloud seeding. So moving then into, to long-term and, and water reuse, so four areas of water reuse, Purple Pipe, which is your traditional recycled water system and Marin Water has maybe 330 or so customers who receive treated recycled water in the Los Kalinas, Terre Linda area. And I think we produce about a million gallons of that per day. Indirect potable reuse, this is where highly treated reservoir would move through a reservoir, highly treated wastewater would move through a reservoir. So take some period of time in the reservoir before being treated and sent to, to customers for consumption. And direct potable reuse is a similar concept, although it would skip the reservoir. It would go straight from highly, from, from a treatment plant, straight to the customers. And then you can use recycled water for things like stream augmentation. The table below here shows some example projects for each of those options and the, I'm drawing sort of a circle to, to the Purple Pipe, which is our traditional recycled water. Just to note that the, the typical yields in, in our service area for those projects tends to be fairly low. This is just a schematic showing then direct potable reuse where water is consumed. It then goes through the sewer system to the wastewater plant. And from there it's treated and sent to an advanced treatment plant where it could go directly to a consumer or to a, a traditional drinking water treatment plant. We've, we've looked at this, at least conceptually in a, in a number of different, at, at a couple of different sanitation districts here in Marin. But this is an example showing a two MGD facility located at the Central Marin Sanitation Agency and the associated costs for that. Indirect potable reuse, this could be done locally, of course, in, in Marin. And when, when this, this slide talks about a regional indirect potable reuse. And in this particular case, that just means all of the wastewater in Marin would be collected and, and treated and then sent to one of our reservoirs. So this cycle here, water is consumed. The wastewater treatment plant currently in, in our system, all of the water from the wastewater treatment plants, except the small fraction that we recycle for irrigation and other uses is discharged to San Francisco Bay. In the ideal case, all of that water would then be reci- recycled. And then in the case of indirect potable reuse, it's, it goes through a reservoir system typically with six months residence time. Or as they do in Los Angeles area, they inject it into the aquifer where it resides for a period of time before being withdrawn. And in, to, to a treatment plant and then back into the municipal uses. A couple of examples, these are smaller scale projects for Purple Pipe that are shown here. And again, just note they're relatively low volumes. Project costs aren't too bad. When we start looking at the unit costs for, for the water, they're, they're fairly high. Now that doesn't mean that the projects won't go. It just means that maybe, you know, grants would be useful in bringing those costs down. Another option is onsite reuse. This is an example of the SFPUC building that they, you know, a new development some years ago. And what they do is they treat all of the water sources for this building. So this is the wastewater from, from kitchen sinks and so on. And then gray water as well as stormwater, air conditioning condenser, and of course rainfall. And they collect all of this and treat it and recycle it into the building for toilet flushing. It's kind of suitable really for a large building or maybe a campus style facilities. San Francisco is one of the leaders in this area and in their system, this, this type of requirement for onsite reuse doesn't kick in until maybe 250,000 square feet. And, and there probably not too many developments in Marin of that size. So it may or may not be a good fit for us, but it's still something to be aware of. Another option on the smaller scale of the satellite or scalping treatment plants, where the plant sits literally adjacent to the sewer and it pulls water out of the sewer through a treatment process shown here as a fairly advanced treatment process would, would produce a high quality recycled water that could be used for any number of approved uses showing irrigation, toilet flushing and cooling here. There are some residuals from this because the water in Marin in, in many areas is, is sort of tidally influenced. So that there's some salt from the bay that gets into the sewer water. And to make it suitable for irrigation, we need to remove that salt using a reverse osmosis process. As we have evaluated these projects over the years in a number of different areas and applications, the ranging cost is anywhere from a unit cost that is from 6,000 an acre foot all the way up to about eight or 9,000 an acre foot. And typically as we compare them to more centralized recycling projects, those, those are in the $3,000 per acre foot range. Recycled water can be used for things like stream flow augmentation. As we've seen in this drought, there's a lot of pressure on the reservoir systems and some reservoirs are very low. Not just in Marin. And this can affect both the quality and quantity of water that's available for release. So if we could repurpose that water, it, it might help buffer the stream release. Of course, there are a number of challenges with this approach. And really it, we, we'd need some significant studies and, and pilots and testing and so on to prove it out. But theoretically this is possible. It would be on a similar scale to that regional indirect potable reuse that I talked about earlier. And the, the capital number for that, and these are just approximate numbers at this point, conceptual costs really of around 360 million. A lot of folks are curious and interested about expanding storage, particularly excavation or dredging. And when, when we think about, I guess the, one, one way to think about it is in a reservoir system, reservoirs usually are fairly steep sided, which, which means that they're wider at the top and narrower at the bottom. And so this schematic on the right sort of attempts to show that, you know, if you were to try to dig out a little bit of the bottom here, which would be quite a big volume of dirt. But you, you wouldn't actually get that much volume of water for the effort. But if you were to choose to raise the dam perhaps, that the level of the dam, you can see at the top of the reservoir system, you, you would obtain a, a lot more volume. The, the challenge with raising dams is of course you, you flood and inundate a much wider area. So if we were to consider this for something like Nikasio reservoir, we'd have to be cognizant of the county road and of course the town of Nikasio itself. And notwithstanding adding storage to reservoirs brings additional complications associated with water rights and then of course the environmental approvals for doing the work itself. So expanding Suluhuli is an example of expanded storage. Here you could raise the dam 48 feet from its current, I think, about 100 feet. And you get a significant new capacity in the reservoir. Your, your yield in the end, 20,000 more acre feet in storage. And how much of that that you would be able to, to use really depends a, like sort of when you, you start using Suluhuli reservoir. Other storage options include storing the water in the ground in, in Aquafur. So in this particular example and scenario, we might be able to, for example, purchase more Sonoma water. And instead of, instead of bringing it down to Marin, we could send it to an aquifer, say maybe in Petaluma or Rona Park area and, and, and store the water in, in the ground there and on an exchange basis with one of those agencies. When it's dry, we'd be able to pull out most of the water that we'd put in. Desalination, I know there's a lot of interest in Dsal and as many of you know, the district studied desalination, not just once, but twice in, in the early 1990s and again in the 2005, 2007 period where we ran a year-long pilot and developed some detailed water quality analysis, environmental impacts and of course costs. These costs have been updated recently this year and are shown here. A 15 million gallon desalination plant based on the updated costs is about $225 million. To me, well, these were, these numbers were fairly rigorously looked at, but I have to say that number does seem a little light to me. And, and when you couple it with the annual operating cost of about $20 million, you can start to see the impact that Dsal can have. In terms of a schedule for building a permanent desalination plant, 48 months would be, would be pretty quick for the first main major desalination plant in the bay. EnerTy's. Many of you may know that, that California has a, a fairly robust EnerTy system. In the Bay Area itself, there are a number of existing EnerTy's. I won't go through them all, but basically just about all of the Bay Area is EnerTy'd with the exception of Marin. And we are of course EnerTy'd with Sonoma, our partners to the north, but the Greater Bay Area is still sort of a missing link for us. And that is in fact, one of our proposed projects to, to make that EnerTy a reality. And this brings in sort of a whole different ecosystem in terms of water projects. It, it will allow us to, sorry, let me go back. If we're EnerTy'd with the rest of the Bay Area, suddenly projects that may free up capacity in East Bay mud system may be of interest to Marin. And, and, and so that there's just a much richer and deeper pool of projects for us to work with in terms of water supply. So that, that's a lot of information in a very quick, short period of time. And how do we prioritize what projects we're going to do? And this is really just an example prioritization. As you can imagine, this would be a decision and a and a discussion with the board in terms of which areas they would like us to pursue and under what principles or characteristics that they would like us to consider the different sources. So this is just an example showing the sort of ultimate priority here in terms of yield and cost and unit cost. And the highest priority for us at the moment, we're working on the entertie. And then indirect potable reuse is indicated as high here as is groundwater banking. And of course, watershed management. And so then the ideal characteristics of a water source, right, we'd really like no environmental impacts. But is that really practical? I'm not sure there's a source with no impacts at all. So we'd be looking really for something with low impact. Ideally, climate change resilient, a low energy or carbon footprint. And of course, a high quality water source. So as we move forward, we're going to continue to develop certainly the emergency entertie project and winter water with D cell moving to the back burner at this point. Just based on the existing infrastructure to support us with winter water and the demands D cell will place on our, on our staff and resources as we pursue the entertie project. And then of course, we'll, based on board input, we'll develop an implementation plan for water supply opportunities. That concludes my presentation.
Paul, we have one question come up in the Q and A. Can you talk more about the shade balls that you mentioned on the slide for the reservoir evaporation issue?
Yeah, briefly, it's a very simple concept where I think there's a video on YouTube somewhere in LA. More of a concrete basin that they're looking at there. But, but basically hundreds of thousands or maybe even millions of sort of imagine two or three inch plastic spheres that float on the surface of the reservoir. And they essentially block the light from, from hitting the reservoir there by preventing evaporation.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to hands raised now.
Okay, thank you. So the first one that I see hands raised is Mr. John Torrey. Go ahead, sir, when you're ready.
Okay. Right, John Torrey, I'm speaking for myself tonight, but also for the Marin Water Crisis Group. Several weeks ago, we formed this group on Nextdoor. And we have 40 members now. And there's been a lot of intelligent discussion on the different options that the water district is pursuing, a lot of original ideas coming out of that group. And I just want to dwell on a couple of things here. And if there are other members of the crisis group tuning in, just come along with your questions. But a couple of things on the water supply contracts, fill us in on this. As I understand it, there are farmers in the Sacramento Valley that want to sell their water. They've given up farming for the time being and they're going to sell their water rights. One question comes to mind. What are we talking about here? Is this a huge amount of water? Are there that many farmers? What acre feet are we talking about here? And also on the contract side, let us know what contracts are in the works. And are they single year contracts, multi-year contracts? And how much, if we had to rely on these contracts, how much of our supply would be met by those contracts? What's the shortfall? And also, like everybody else, I've been looking at the IJ articles. And the most recent one, I believe, suggested that there's a limit on how many million gallons a day the pipeline can actually absorb. And I think that the differential was something like, at first there was 13 million gallons a day and now it's down to eight. My number is right here. So I'll, I'll I'd like to get some answers to those questions. And then I've got another set of quick questions on desalination, but I'd like to hear from any of you on the staff here about the questions.
Sure, I'll start and Paul can fill in what I miss. How much water is out there? A lot. I've heard anywhere from 60 to 80%, but I don't know the precise number of water in California is used for agriculture. Broadly. So, but that's probably not your question. If you're asking how much water is out there in the market today, that's hard to know. What I can tell you is, you know, probably I've heard 100 roughly per year of these water transfers happen. So it's a fairly active market. Certainly in a drought of this historic magnitude, the market becomes more competitive. So there's more buyers and the price of that water tends to go up. These transfers are generally, and that's what we'd be looking at, one year transfers. And there's a whole bunch of reasons for that, but that's how generally the system is set up. I'll say that I'm not familiar with any Bay Area agency kind of Central Bay that this year is not pursuing water transfers. And not just in a severe drought, but that these are part of their water supply portfolio. Some of them every year, some of them every few years, some of them just as a drought supply pursue these transfers from this transfer market, talking to irrigation districts and farmers on are they interested this year to follow fields, that sort of stuff. You also asked about this eight MGD versus the 13 we had talked about. The 13 million gallons a day is what we're designing the entertie for. Of course, the entertie is connecting our system to East Bay mud system. And they've done some modeling and they've indicated they can supply eight MGD through that entertie. I look at that as good news. Eight MGD is a lot of water. And they did fairly rigorous modeling to be able to confirm that. So in my view, that's very positive. I do understand and appreciate the concern of we need more than eight MGD. If you look at indoor water use, and we can talk about some of the numbers and compare. Eight MGD would be in addition to still getting some water from our Sonoma partner as well as likely some water from our local supply. And collectively, we're pretty confident were this project to happen that we're going to have sufficient water, sufficient water for what? And we're really talking about indoor use. And we look at that in terms of our winter water consumption as our kind of basis for our winter use estimation. Paul.
Can I, I think. Yeah, did we answer your question, John?
Um, well, specifically are any contracts in the work? Are you negotiating with any particular farmers?
Yeah, well, we have a number of parties we're in the middle of negotiations with, yes.
And right, on the desalination, you know, this is a topic that gets people excited both positively and negatively. Forty years ago, I lived in a city that we were building in the Middle East. And Mitsubishi barged in a D cell plant that supplied water for the new city of Yanbu. Now, that was 40 years ago. There have been a lot of improvements to, to desalination since then. On the lease side, sorry, excuse that phone, on the lease side. How is it that you've only been able to come up with three, four lease plants from Australia? I mean, this, this may sound insulting. It's not meant to be. 120 countries now have operating desalination plants. So I'm, it just begs the question, there must be a lot of desalination plants out there for lease at this time.
Well, I, I'll start. Paul can get in the details of the efforts we did to look at what's out there in the market. I, I wanted to note that there is a large and growing number of diesel facilities in California, in the country and globally, absolutely. The vast majority of those are permanent diesel facilities that were planned, designed, constructed. Paul indicated 48 months. I'm hurt, I suspect very few, if any, got done in 48 months. A large diesel facility can take 10 years, very fast would be five years. 48 months would be, you know, in an emergency, but even in that, you can see a permanent facility would not meet the timeframe that we need in context of the severe crisis that we're in. So we were left looking at, and let Paul describe the process we went through, but looking at temporary kind of pre-designed containerized systems. A way to think about that is, okay, you need housing on a piece of property. You just don't have time to design and build a house. But you can get a trailer out pretty quick on your property. So that's kind of the analogy here. And so what Paul's going to describe is we looked into this trailer market analogy for these pre-constructed temporary diesel facilities. So Paul, can you explain the process we went through to look at what's available out there, given the constraints we have?
Yeah, so we hired a team of Kennedy, Jenks and Jacobs who between the two of them have, Kennedy Jenks has been involved in a number of Bay Area desalination from Santa Cruz to Monterey One Water.
Those are consultants, engineering consultants.
Engineering consultants, yes. And, and of course, Jacobs brought in their worldwide expertise in desalination ranging from the Arabian Gulf, Australia, and of course, the United States. So that was our team. That team put together a water quality specification and are sort of a request for quotation. That request for quotation was sent out to a number of known equipment suppliers. I think we sent it to 10 equipment suppliers. And we received responses back from two or three of them, one of which was Osmiflo, who I think you've seen some of the staff reports on that, but that, that's the facility that had these containerized units that are highly pre-engineered and designed for deployment around the world at short notice. In fact, they can send one out within 10 days. It's sort of on standby. The others have to be rehabbed as they come in. So there's sort of delays of a couple of months as they go through the rehab process for those. So, so that was, that was who we started working with, who had the shortest lead time and gave us the best chance of success, successfully deploying a desalination. We did also hear from Suez, which is a large player in the industry. And the difference being the Suez units were not as highly integrated. So we could still work with them if we, if we needed to. But it would require more engineering design, greater complexity and operation. The, the fact is there, there just aren't desalination units sitting around waiting to be deployed. And so that, that's what we found.
Thank you.
May I?
Let's move on, John, if we could, and we'll come back to you unless, because we do want to give everyone an opportunity, but unlike a board meeting, you'll have more than one shot at questions.
Yeah, Mr. Torrey, I'll put, I'll keep you in mind. Okay, let me just move on to the next, next person. Susan Kolb. Ms. Kolb.
Oh, I put my, my question in chat.
Oh, okay.
Happy, but I think that you may have been, it may have been covered. And that was again, the, the commitments from water to, for water transfers to come over from the East Bay. And predominantly, I know eBay mud is concerned about their customers. I'm kind of confused about that. I think they have a huge number of customers and we have very few, but we still need a lot of water. So that's one question I don't, are you getting contracts from them? Or are you getting contracts from Contra Costa? You know, where are the contracts coming from?
The, the, the water transfer is coming from third parties. We're benefiting from our relationships and really the willingness of our sister agencies to help us out in time of need. We are not necessarily getting the water from East Bay mud. They're just allowing us to put in connection that Paul described in entertie that will connect our water system to theirs. And then that allows us to do a transfer and move the water between East Bay mud and Contra Costa to ultimately bring it to us. It's complicated.
At least the contracts that you're, you're talking about that you're under work, you're working on now. Are those the contracts you referred to?
Yes.
And what's the likelihood of getting those completed?
I think the likelihood's very reasonable. We wouldn't be doing what we're doing if we didn't have some pretty high confidence that we'd be able to enter into these contracts and deliver water. I mean, if I, that, we, we aren't going to be going to our board and asking them to proceed with this project in less than, until we have a very high degree of confidence that the water will be there via agreements that we enter into.
I understand. So then ultimately it would go through this pipeline that you're talking about constructing. Is that how it would work?
Right. The, ultimately the water gets moved around. It's got to probably be stored and treated. So it is a pretty complicated
Yes.
moving, but that's correct. Ultimately, the water would come into the Marin system through the interconnection at East Bay mud that's on the east, would be on the east side of the bridge and be pumped over the new pipeline on the bridge where that to be constructed.
And are all the cities in that connection in, on board with this? Is, for example, is Richmond on board with this and the other cities that are involved?
Well, the East Bay mud connection does happen to be in the city of Richmond. And folks may have seen some concerns expressed by the Richmond community. And we are currently and very intently working with Richmond to resolve the issues they've identified. For the most part, they were construction related impacts, noise and traffic and the like.
I know this is not easy. I know if it were easy, it'd be done, but so these are concerns that of course, we, as the recipient of the waters are very concerned about.
Absolutely.
Additionally, there was at your June board meeting, there were minutes that referred to a slide presented regarding steps needed to be taken to get a proposition on the ballot for voters to approve construction of a D cell plant. to approve construction of a diesel plant. And what's the status of that effort? I know you say it's on the back burner, but I know this process still has to happen. Given that in two thousand and ten, the voters of Marin said that this has to happen before a diesel plant can be erected.
Right. We we are looking at that and we do understand the issue. It does seem there's a good chance that were we to need to pursue a diesel, notwithstanding all the issues you've heard from Paul, which is why it's on a back burner. The indications are we would need to go out to the voters. Which and maybe we'd want to do that anyway for future diesel opportunities. So that that is something that we're going to continue as we develop this project and understand other opportunities and monitor the weather. Are we in, I believe the window is April or June, going to put a measure on the ballot?
I see. So I understand that you have this long-term strategic plan. And diesel is noted in that plan. But as you said, this process takes a number of years. And getting our in Marin voter approval adds on to that process. So I just wanted to know if the board was mindful of that so that they would move forward.
Yes, they they are. I mean, the the board is so engaged in all of this. And that certainly is one aspect of diesel that is being, you know, evaluated and considered absolutely.
Okay, I I'll yield to others because I do have other questions, but that's only fear that others have a chance.
Come back to you.
Okay.
And the next speaker, Kristin Newt, please. Ms. Newt.
Hi, I am I'm a volunteer for Marin Water. I love it. I did want to just ask, um, was there some water moved from Sula Hule to Nacasio? We've been talking about that and I was just curious about. I had heard there was a particular amount moved and then we had to save some for the, you know, streams. But is there any comments on any movement from Sula Hule into other reservoirs?
Yeah, Kristen, we we did earlier in the year set up diesel generators out at our Sula Huli reservoir to power the pumps and I forget now all the weeks are blending into one, how many weeks and months we pumped, but I think it was maybe four months or so, three or four months pumping. And we moved pretty close to two thousand acre feet. That was our target. I think maybe we're closer to eighteen hundred in the end, but but somewhere in that range. We did this, of course, with consultation with all the fishery agencies who were brought into the operation plan for the reservoir this year. And 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 we had always planned to leave some residual water in the reservoir so that we could continue to meet our stream release requirements.
Thank you so much. Um, I volunteer a bit loganitas for one team or with with all of you. And so we want to make sure we're saying the accurate, you know, information. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question and your volunteering.
Thank you. Next speaker, Rick Adler, please. Mr. Adler.
Yes, thank you. I find these charts and illustrations and presentations very helpful. And but unfortunately, they go by so fast, they just begin to understand how to read the chart and it's gone. And I didn't really capture, can retain the information.
What we do, sir, just so you know, on that point, we do post all the slides from this webinar on our website. So you'll be
That was my next question is that I've clicked on every word in every corner of of your website and I cannot find any of these things. I would also like to see the replays of these webinars so I can further understand them. There's such a large body of knowledge that you guys have that we, the users and citizens need to get so we can make intelligent suggestions and make intelligent decisions. But you know, we need to be able to re-study these things. I cannot find any of those things and other people have also said they cannot find them. I don't know where you're putting them.
Sir, Terry, where would they find the presentations from the workshops, from board meetings?
Yes. They can find it under calendar and agendas. So like, for example, tonight, they could click on the agenda. Right now, though, I I haven't received the presentations for tonight, but they will first thing tomorrow be posted as well as the as well as this meeting. But all of our meetings, all of the PowerPoint slides, all of the agendas and staff reports, they are found under the calendar and agendas page. If you just and you can just click on any of our Board of Directors meetings, whether it's September or June of this year or last year, you'll find all of our documents on the website.
I've done that and I can't find them there. I'm sorry, maybe I just
Would it be helpful if I if I shared my screen for for just a moment, just to to show you where these are located? This is for every board meeting, special meetings. I can just do a couple clicks, maybe it's helpful for others that are in attendance. So this is our homepage, sir.
Yeah.
The Marinwater.org. You would go to this calendar tile here. You're going to click on any of these meetings. This is tonight's meeting. So the PowerPoints are not available. But when you click on the meeting, the agenda, all the agenda and staff reports are here. Following the meeting, the recordings are available here as well as in this space, all of the PowerPoints. So it's a two-click process, but for example, our October fifth board meeting, you need to view event details. And here you can see the agenda, all of the presentations in PDF format and our video recording here. And this repeats for for all events that that are hosted by the district.
Okay, I'll try it again.
We're all always available to help if if needed.
Can I also comment on the plans?
Sure.
Can I make a comment? I suggest that we concentrate mostly on projects that are in Marin that we can control and make them permanent rather than spending a lot of time, money and energy on trying to get water from afar or trying to get water through interim projects that we concentrate on long-term projects. Because if we're in desperate need of water, the Central Valley is going to be even more in desperate need of water and they're not going to want to share their water. The water in the Central Valley that this inner type project hopes to connect with has been the subject of hundred years of water wars and every drop of that water is adjudicated and water rights and claimed from the top of the sky to the bottom of the earth and to get the water when they're desperate, there are millions of people in the Central Valley and thousands of farms. And that water is not going to be available. And also, we'd have to transport it through dozens of federal, state, local agencies, cities, towns, districts, all of which will have the ability to slow the project or stop it. And so I don't think we can get emergency water in time or at any expense that's worthwhile. I think I would much propose we concentrate on projects that stay in Marin, like the recycling of the water. That's Marin water that can stay in Marin. We build permanent recycling plants to reuse that water. Or catching the fog that rolls in over the foothills of Mount Tam every day, especially in the summer. And you know, it keeps getting dismissed as, oh, that's just a little bit of water. Well, we spend a lot of time and energy to save a little bit of water. And so that's get every little bit of resource, but I don't think it's that small a resource. And we needs to be investigated and tried out. Similarly, with diesel keeps getting dismissed, but that's for good reasons because diesel by reverse osmosis is very complicated, very expensive, requires high maintenance. Whereas we should look at desalination through evaporation and condensation. We take the bay water and you boil all the water out of it and all you're left is with the salt, which can be sold on the market is rock salt. People will be happy to come pay you money to take it away. So you have no environmental impact. And and you have a low, both of these systems, the fog and the diesel through evaporation, condensation are low tech. Basic systems that rely on natural processes. The fog, for instance, can be captured by the ten by ten foot screens on the ridge tops and drip into pipes that go by fed by gravity down to stainless steel tanks and you have very pure kind of water.
Mr. Adler, I, you know, and I I do appreciate the comments and we've heard them. And actually, I wanted to tell you that they are interesting ideas. The challenge we have today is we need to potentially, right, depending on the weather, have supplemental supply in the very short term. So that really by definition does rule out some of these innovative ideas that would take piloting or recycled projects that take a very, very long time because you have to treat it to the high level and then get the distribution system. So I I don't want you to think that we aren't hearing you nor that we aren't considering in our long-term planning, the range of ideas that you saw Paul present and more. It's just today in the, you know, urgent nature of this historical drought that we're facing. We really need to find opportunities to bring in the volume we may need and maybe even more so in the timing we may need it. And that simply does preclude a lot of options today, but not for our long-term planning.
Well, I I hope you're right and I'm wrong and that you can successfully do the inner type project. But I seriously doubt that if we're desperate for water, they're going to let go of any water and that it can be done in time. But I hope you're wrong. I mean, I'm wrong and you're right. And I hope that works. If we need it, I also hope that this becomes a wet year and we can then proceed on a more rational basis to for the long-term projects that should be the Marin projects not relying on other agencies and other cities and other areas which have all their own problems to deal with. And we don't want to get involved in all that mess. We just need to concentrate our time, energy and money on providing the water for Marin.
Thank you, Mr. Adler.
I thank you.
You really appreciate your engagement and your ideas. So thank you, Mr. Adler.
The next speaker is Mr. Ed Jameson. Mr. Jameson, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much. I just would like to start off by saying how excellent these webinars are. I watched one last week. It was really outstanding. I can see that tonight is another great performance by you guys. And it's reassuring to me to see the capabilities here that you folks have in the district staff. So I want to say thank you for being so doggone good at what you do. Having said all that very succinctly, the baseline water use during the summer, from what I've been able to tell is about thirty one million gallons a day. We've come up with a pipeline that will provide eight and Sonoma can provide two or three during the summer, not four, as best I can tell. That totals up about eleven. Now, we did somewhat of a pretty good job this summer getting started on conservation, reducing that thirty one million gallons a day to only twenty three to twenty four million at the summer peak. That was a twenty seven percent reduction this year that we achieved. We I I'm sure we can do better as we work on it going forward, but we we seem to, many of us have taken it seriously and reduced our use twenty seven percent to twenty three or twenty four million a day during the summer. That is twice what we can get from the pipeline and Sonoma next summer. So that's it's a fifty percent shortfall to what we need this summer. And it's I'm I'm left with this striking obvious, strikingly obvious conclusion that without five point four million gallons a day from the temporary diesel plants that you folks have been talking about for quite a while now, three of them. We haven't a clue of saving our landscaping and I've heard both from the board and from Mr. Hornstein this evening that the eleven million or so gallons can provide indoor water use requirements. And I'm left with a really troubling conclusion that both the board and perhaps, I hope not, but maybe the plan is to just let landscaping die. And that's how we're going to solve our drought shortfalls. And I guess I'd like you to speak to whether the eleven million gallons will really let most of our landscaping die. And how seriously we can expect the five point four million or whether the the board or this agency is really against even seriously considering it. So if you could comment on that, please. Again, thank you very much, though, for these opportunities. We this is our opportunity to learn and ask some questions here. So I do really appreciate all that you guys are doing for us. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. And thanks for the question. There is, we are working on an additional supply and Paul did touch on it, and that's this winter water concept from Sonoma. Like all of this, there's a lot of work to do and a lot of steps, but that does have an opportunity as well. So but getting to the heart of your question, I guess it depends, and I'm not trying to be cute with that answer. It depends on what happens with the climate. So the scenario you played out would be that it is so dry that simply there's no local water supply available or or that kind of. And certainly that's possible, but that would take a you know, probably a repeat of last year or worse. And of course, last year was one of the most historically dry years in our entire record database. So in that low probability event that there is only the supply you mentioned and nothing available from our local supply. That would be the case as you described it, we'd have enough water for health and safety needs for indoor use. But again, you know, if we have an average year, let's say, and by definition, average, you would assume that's the most likely probability. It doesn't cover every scenario, certainly. But if we have an average year, we will have a fair amount of local supply to augment. I'm not saying that we would be in an unconstrained usage. Again, depends on the climate, but I don't think necessarily you'd be limited, we'd be limited to just the sources you mentioned that we're bringing in.
Am I still on?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I'm new to all this. I I hear you and I think I understand you. My concern is our plan at this point is to hang on by our fingernails, hoping that we can get the pipeline in before we literally run out of water in our reservoirs next July or August. And I'm pretty sure I've got that part right. What you've described is relying, we hope we'll get rainfall so that we can do this all over again, replenishing our reservoirs just to the stage where they might get us through one more year. And we're not getting out of the drought shortage. We're just kind of doing this all over again next year. If we get rain this winter and if we don't, we're not going to have what you have described. If we don't have an average year, we're not going to have a lot more water than the twelve. Maybe we'll have fifteen. That is way below a lot more water than the 12. Maybe we'll have 15. That is way below what we use this year, 23, 24. And as for recharging around in Sonoma, that's an interesting idea. As best I've seen, it's a trivial amount of water in the total framework of things here. And it's probably out several years and it, because it's so small, if I've been paying attention, it's really just kind of a sideline to the whole thing. So I'm very concerned that without the three D cell plants to get us through the next year or two or three, we are really really supporting only indoor use here with perhaps a, a, a small amount for outdoor preservation of our landscaping. Marin is beautiful. It's green. It's why I came here 43 years ago, part of it anyway. And I see a lot of that at risk here and I, I'd like to hear a plan that preserves the beauty of Marin, not just allows us to flush our toilets and take a shower every now and then at a trickle flow, which I'm doing. My, my usage is down 50%. But there's just not a lot more that I can do and I don't want to lose all my landscape. I'm sorry to be so long. I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. And I do want to reinforce just a bit of Paul's presentation that we are talking about short-term. We are also looking at long-term and working on long-term opportunities. So this is not a forever. Droughts haven't lasted forever. Sure. Australia did have a pretty tough six-year drought. But for us, I mean, Sunday, we have one of the biggest atmospheric river rivers coming in that, you know, in the past number of years. Is that going to bust the drought? No. Is it going to significantly reduce demand? Because people are going to stop watering their lawns. Yes. And that reduced demand will add to our supply, right? We aren't, we didn't project for this dry. I mean, I'm sorry, for this wet weather come so early in the season. So I, I think this is very favorable. The weather, of course, it's going on and it's notable and significant. So early in the season, it doesn't necessarily foretell what's coming, but we'll take it and it will help not just with a small amount in the lakes, but most importantly, and part of the messaging, we're going to be very we, I say, is really that kind of stuff falls primarily on Emma and her team and communications. We are going to be communicating to people and I think we already are. It's raining, turn off your irrigation and that will really increase our available supply.
Next speaker, Christy Denton Cohen, please.
Hello, everybody. Um, thank you for taking my questions. I have a couple. And I really want to acknowledge how hard I know all of you work every single day and everything that you're looking into and trying to communicate and everything else. My question is that there was a grand jury report written in 2008 called sustaining Marin's fragile water supply. And then there was also the municipal water districts, water resources planned for 2040 that was written in 2017. And why are we having this conversation now? I mean, if you look historically at all of our droughts, I don't have to repeat how many droughts we've had over the years. My, one of my granddaughters or two of them are, are 11 years old and most of their lives have been in drought. Why, why are we dealing with this now when we should have been dealing with it for a long time ago? A lot of, a lot of these long-range plans should have been dealt with many years ago.
I, I think, um, thank you for that question. And I think that's a question a lot of people have. The, the, the way I look at our current situation is that due to the historic nature of what's occurred over the last two years, the driest in 150 years. This is not, this is a natural disaster. This is an event largely beyond the control of, you know, i- in, in a planning context, it will certainly orient our planning going forward. And what I mean by that, the big drought in the late seventies, which prior to this one was kind of our drought of record. Following that drought, that there's a sense that we didn't do anything and it's, we just need to help people appreciate after that drought of the seventies. We built a new reservoir. We doubled the size of an existing reservoir. We tied into the Sonoma system. We developed a very relative for our service area, solid water recycling system where we take wastewater from a neighboring wastewater agency is treated to a very high level and that's used for irrigation in different parts of the district. And we developed a really a world-class conservation program. So we have not just been sitting on our hands. And then in addition to that, we've continued to do planning and evaluation of opportunities. We're working with Sonoma water and the other kind of we call ourselves contractors. They're a wholesaler. We buy retail water as does a number of agencies from Sonoma. We're working with them on a resiliency study with a very significant focus, as Paul mentioned, on a groundwater storage and retrieval approach. We're also tracking closely. In fact, we were on some calls over the last two days to begin to talk about indirect potable reuse. It's a big idea. It's emerging pretty rapidly in the industry where you take highly treated wastewater and you put it in one of your lakes, one of your reservoirs to augment your supply. So we are non-stop planning and looking at water resources, trying to understand the projections of climate change. But I think we're all seeing, I'm not making excuses and I, I appreciate your concern, but I think we're all seeing in, in around the world that the pace of climate change is much, much quicker than had ever been predicted. And that's part of where we are now, it seems. So I understand your comment, but there was tremendous amount of work done after the last big drought. And that has not stopped.
Right. I remember that drought. I just moved here and I remember I was living in the city and I would take the bus over here to see my sister and the bus reeked because nobody was taking showers. But what I don't understand is that we've known about these issues for a long time and drought is not new to Marin. The last year has been extreme, but climate change has been predicting this type of thing for quite a while. And so I just, it just feels like, why hasn't this been dealt with before? So anyway, I guess I, I don't want to hear about the 1970 because that was, you know, good solution for then, but you know, we've had since 2008, since that grand jury report and since 2017 for the 2040 water plant to try to get this stuff in motion. And we didn't need to wait for an emergency like this. But going back to that, one of the intriguing things for a lot of us has been D cell. And you, I've, I've heard a number of presentations now, are you talking about brackish D cell or ocean water D cell? Because my understanding is brackish could be a little bit cheaper. So if we were taking water from say near the Petaluma River or even in, you know, is it brackish near the Richmond Bridge? Are that, is there a distinguished, do you have, are you distinguishing between brackish and ocean or is it or seawater? Or is it just ocean seawater you're talking about with D cell?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I, I would just add before we move to that question to, while we're on the subject of D cell, it, it is a sort of a conveniently forgotten aspect of our water supply planning that in 2005, seven, we did the pilot. We actually brought a full EIR and defended it. And it was the, the, our constituents that really asked us not to pursue that project. So we've known that water supply is important and, and the board has taken steps to try and address it over the years. Notwithstanding, we do find ourselves in a difficult situation. Now, to your question as to brackish and whether the, the facilities we've looked at were brackish or ocean. We've looked at desalination near the Rodden Gun Club. That's where the pilot was. The water there varies depending on the time of year from almost certainly brackish, maybe even more fresh than brackish at some points to pretty close to ocean. But it's, it's never quite ocean salinity. As, as to the Petaluma River, it's really not a good location for a desalination plant. There'd be no good way for us to dispose of the, the brine. Whereas in our concepts here, we have the Central Marin Sanitation Agency outfall, which is mostly freshwater that we can use to dilute the brine so that we don't have any unnecessary environmental impacts.
So that when you're talking about the public said not to do, and maybe I didn't hear you right. I know it's getting late in the day. Not to go forward with the D cell. I, I, my understanding about that was measure S than measure T in 2010. Is that correct? And they, but basically what the vote was is there has to be a vote before you guys can proceed with the D cell. It wasn't against D cell as much as we want to give our two cents before you could do it. Is that correct? Or do I have that misinterpreted?
I, I, I think you're mostly correct there. I think that the, the water district had a ballot put on in order to avoid or provide an option from the original ballot measure, which was proposed, which was far more restrictive. Which I, I think we wouldn't have been able to even consider the planning effort that we've undertaken in, in this drought.
Okay. Well, my last thing will be I had the, I was fortunate enough to be in Canyon de Che in July. And it's kind of, it kind of hits you in the gut when you realize a lot of those people left those gorgeous ruins 1200 and thinking around 1200 because of drought is one of the speculations that there, they were uprooted and had to move on. And I sure hope that doesn't happen here, but thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you. Okay. We have two speakers at 6:22. So I just want to be cognizant of the time for our folks. And before, because we also have Q and A questions as well, it's my understanding. And so Baron Hamel, please.
Good evening again, and thank you again for all that you've been doing and that you're spending your evenings addressing this with the public. I can't stress how important it is to everyone. I'd like to address the need for more aggressive conservation. In 2019, we had above average rainfall per Ms. Kroy's chart. Yet two years later, we find ourselves in a potentially dire situation with regards to available water for normal use. Doesn't this speak to a need to change how we think about using water? People who lived through earlier droughts changed their water use habits then and have maintained those conservation habits and it is the norm for them now. This suggests that educating the public more aggressively about changing water use habits would be an obvious place for additional conservation with no negative environmental impact. I'm reminded about how Cape Town, South Africa stayed off becoming the first city in the world to run out of water entirely in 2018. They conserved their way out of it in just a few short months by being aggressive in their communications programs and heavily citing water abusers. It might be useful for Marin water to explore how they communicated so effectively so that more can be done here right now, even through the rainy season, so we can conserve more water during the winter. I know, for example, in my own situation, I've been conserving 75% of my water in the last three months. When I stopped using the irrigation system and hand-watered my garden, my garden's doing fine. I was able to bring my normal water use down compared to last year by 75%. It is doable without great hardship. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Hamel. And Mr. Paul Duder, please. I hope I'm saying your name right. Go ahead, sir.
Hi. So I would just, uh, there have been a lot of speakers so far and they've had numerous alternatives, say, I will, I will call alternative ideas for, you know, for getting us out of this crisis. The last speaker was talking about aggressive conservation. Some people have been talking about D cell on the Petaluma River, et cetera, et cetera. It, would it be possible to have maybe a place on the website where some of these alternative ideas are just listed and maybe spoken to so that people like myself who are kind of new to all these topics? You know, because I'm thinking about all these ideas too. It's like, I wonder if they thought about this. And of course you guys have thought about it. So, you know, why don't we take some notes and say what we think about these things? The one gentleman talked about capturing water from, from condensation from clouds. That seems like an interesting idea, you know, I imagine it doesn't bring very much water, but maybe it does. It would be kind of interesting to just have maybe an approximation of, you know, how much we would get from that approach and how much it might cost. Just, you know, kind of for information sake, so that we can kind of all be on the same page. And, and then everybody that's here, we can kind of, you know, when we have these meetings, we can maybe be a little bit more together. On the same page, understanding what has been considered and, you know. Here's an aspect. Some of these things are unsuitable as a short-term project, what Ben has mentioned multiple times. Like that's a great idea, but that would take forever. It's not a short-term solution. So then maybe we can categorize some of these alternative approaches as this is actually doable, but it's a long-term one. And, and maybe say if something about why it's long-term and why it's not short-term. Again, so that we're kind of all on the same page. Would that be possible? Is that something, am I crazy thinking that this might be helpful?
Tempted as I am to respond in, in, in the affirmative about being crazy, just reflection of all of how busy we really are responding to the drought. Ben had mentioned earlier that this is indeed a crisis that we're in. But no, you, you're not at all, of course. Misguided. I, I think those are good suggestions for us. We do try to capture the information in, in some of the presentation materials. So I would encourage you whenever we make those available and, and just for the record, that's absolutely not Terry's fault. I was fiddling with the presentation until a few minutes before the, the, tonight, just reflection of how busy we were are and continue to be. Just anecdotally on, on the fog capture, which is harvesting the drops from the cloud you mentioned. On the slide, it shows about a gallon per square meter per day. So you, you can kind of do the rudimentary math to see how much square footage or square meters in this case. You, you would need of, of mesh to capture significant volumes of water. And then that, that water then, as we, you know, as you think through these things, if we're not capturing that water at the top of the hill above the reservoir, then we've got to move it to the reservoir. So now you're pumping as well and pipes and valves and control features and it just, it quickly snowballs, but but we'll, we'll take your suggestion and see if we can put sort of a, a page together.
Well, the main reason I'm asking for that is that I have my own list of crazy ideas. And I don't want to, you know, list them all here. But I am curious enough, you know, about them to maybe try to get some sort of a response offline.
Yeah, definitely. Call me.
Most of them are crazy, but who knows? Maybe some of them aren't so crazy.
No, I'd love to chat. Absolutely. Yeah. Please call me. You can look me up online. Or email me either way. Happy to, happy to chat.
And those slides are actually up as, so just wanted to let everyone know that if they're looking for tonight's slides, they are up on our website. Okay. I do have one more raised hand. Mr. Ed Jameson. Good, Mr. Jameson.
You can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Just addressing Mr. Duder's comment just now, you guys put up a really excellent recap slide, I thought, last Friday and Mr. Selye repeated it this evening. It had 15 items by my recollection, including the first column saying prioritization, all the D cells were low, which I was disappointed in. But I think that would pretty much meet the core of Mr. Duder's request without much work. My suggestion would be to split the first two, first column into two, short-term prioritization and longer-term prioritization. And with that simple fix, I think you would meet most of his requests fairly easily. And with that simple fix, I think he would meet most of his requests fairly easily. And again, thank you so much. I I do appreciate it again, and you guys have remarkable courage to face us all like this. So thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
That's a good come just real quick. Just to be clear, the prioritizations that I presented both on Friday at the retreat and tonight, those are just my example prioritizations. These are are not nothing that's been vetted by by Ben or or the board or Lucy.
Yeah, that's that's dangerous, Paul, but it it actually speaks to what Paul was talking about before. How incredibly busy we are, because typically you wouldn't see that. But and I actually want folks to know that are giving some positive feedback. I'm not looking for it, but I do want you to know that it helps because the staff you're seeing really are working incredibly hard, and I appreciate it. And I'm glad you all appreciate it as well. Terry, were we going to go back to the first, was it John Tori? Who was the first one?
Tori, John, John Tori.
Because I did say that we'd come back.
Right, yeah. So John Tori, and I and I believe that was it. Hold on, let me find him on the list. And we have twelve Q and As as well. All right, so hold on. Let me get Mr. Tori here. Where did he go? There you are, sir. Okay. Go ahead.
Ten years ago, there was a project plan, a certified EIR on the plan, and a discharge permit. I don't recall the exact specifications of that D cell project, but here's my thought on a a permanent D cell facility. Would it not save time if we designed a permanent D cell facility beating the same profile of the one ten years ago? That way, perhaps we could get a discharge permit more easily because it meets the profile of the one ten years ago. Now, EIRs need to be recirculated every five years, but we could recirculate it and update it. So that's my question. Can we take advantage of what was done ten years ago to save time in the design phase?
John, I'll I'll touch on that, and then and then Ben can maybe finish. But I think that what you're suggesting represents the enthusiasm that you saw at the bottom of my slide this evening, where I indicated forty-eight months, which Ben correctly pointed out is wildly optimistic. And even in consideration of the fact that we do have this EIR sitting that's been done, that the work, as we looked at the temporary desalination facility and the discussions with the resource agencies and the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Division of Drinking Water, we we would have some significant updates to do for those studies before any permits would be issued.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to the questions. Go ahead, Emma.
Sure. So I'm going to start at the the top of the list here, back at five thirty from Mr. Robert Archer. This is for you, Paul. What's the preliminary cost estimate per acre foot of the Intertie water based on estimates at this time?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. And of course, we don't know how much water ultimately will be moved through the Intertie because we don't know how long the drought is. So without that sort of ultimate lifetime volume, which is is where these costs per acre feet come. They have a capital cost and operating cost, and then over the life of the project, you know how much water's been produced. In in an emergency resiliency project, that unit cost of water, meaning it kind of gets lost.
Thank you. So the next one we have is this, the twenty million dollar per year operating cost of D cell include any solar power offsets?
It does not. Although, just let me append to that. The the Water District purchases deep green power from Marin Clean Energy, and we would continue to do that, obviously.
Ms. Baron Hamel would like to note for our attendee, John Tori, that the Marin Water Crisis Group is not found on Nextdoor. Maybe you all could possibly connect offline and 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 get Ms. Hamel added to that group. And moving on here, Mr. Rogers is looking for more information regarding why we're not pursuing the rental agreement for D cell while we're continuing to develop other options.
I I think we we sort of touched on D cell, not so much from just its rental aspect, but from the capacity aspect. So a nominal capacity seems to have been made available on the market of about five point four million gallons per day. As we work through the reliability of a treatment plant like that, given that these are containerized units and not a permanent facility, you you would expect a lower percentage of online time. So that means you have to discount that nominal capacity. So as we are already low at the nominal capacity level, and then we further discount it by twenty twenty-five, maybe even thirty, thirty-five percent in terms of reliability, our production, volume production drops to the point where D cell starts to to really not pen out.
Thank you. The next one, they'd like you to speak to why we're looking at having the Intertie pipe underneath the bridge versus in the pedestrian bike space. There was a note about issues with the Coast Guard for it being under the bridge. Can you please explain more about those considerations?
Yes. So we looked at a number of options for putting the pipe on the bridge. The the first one we looked at was putting it below the the lower deck. So that's the you're hanging off the lower deck. The next thing you see is the surface of the bay. The issue with that is that even though the bridge is very high, you would be reducing the clearance for ships. And that brings the Coast Guard permitting in, and and it would, we're, we understand that's a minimum twelve-month process to change the clearances for a major navigational path. The other options, we are, of course, placing it beneath the upper deck. And then the other option we we looked at was placing it on the the bike path or multi-use path. And we selected under the upper deck because it preserves the current and future uses of the bridge, which for the moment is a bicycle lane, but in the future, it could be a part-time bike lane and, you know, rush hour traffic lane, or it could just be restored to a traffic lane or kept as a bicycle lane. And putting the the pipeline in that location would affect those uses.
Okay, our next question is back to reservoir storage. Is there any possibility of a new storage lake being created? Possibly a top French ranch preserve?
I I I think as we look at reservoir storage, and and one of the plans that was cited this evening was our Water Resources twenty forty, it it seems like it would make maybe more sense for us to think about increasing the capacity of Sulahuli, where that the direction we were choosing to go rather than creating a new reservoir.
Okay, so from an anonymous attendee, should we receive water from the Intertie? Would that water be allowed to be used to irrigate golf course greens and teas?
The the Intertie really is, as we're we've been saying this evening, a health and safety net for us. This this water is not for irrigation. This is for health and safety purposes.
Next question is, how much gray water do we discharge?
I don't have the volume to my on the top of my head in terms of that number. We we have wastewater numbers in general, but not a separated out sort of gray water number.
And with the regional housing mandates, what will be the increased demand in the next five years?
I'm not sure how to answer that. You know, when we when we do our urban water management planning, which is every five years, we renew our urban water management plan, we use A-BAG population projections. And it's curious to me that these housing numbers that are coming down from the state are coming from A-BAG. I I I just have to think that A-BAG must be correlating the two. Otherwise, it wouldn't make sense. But in in terms of what units get built, what type of units in what location within the district, it would depend on what their potable demand would be.
I I do want to speak to this briefly in a couple ways. One, I want to let the public know that the board has asked us. I mean, like I noted earlier, there's an approach of our board of leaving no stone unturned, whether that's ideas on demand management or supply augmentation. And one area that they're interested in is how are we going to think about new development? And they've asked us to bring forth a very bold idea. And I say bold, you just don't see this happening too much in our industry. So they've asked us to bring forward a concept of what would no net water look like for new development. So we're going to be doing that. And there's a lot of different models where new developers are required to find their water, to create offsets is more likely, to pay into a fund to at at the value of the water they would use. Typically, what you see with these sorts of programs, if it were to be implemented, is that it really drives developers to design the maximum water efficiency into the development, not just fixtures, but gray water, rain catchment, to really minimize the water footprint. And then the residual demand that they do have would be part potentially of an offset program that actually materially funds the development of new water sources. So that is really getting kind of on the cutting edge of how to deal with conservation going forward generally, but including new development. So I think that's going to be interesting to watch how that kind of unfolds. The other thing I wanted to say very briefly is the assumption that there's a direct relationship on growth in that if we increase the population in our service area with new development by ten percent, the demand on the system goes up by ten percent. And that's really not accurate for a number of reasons, including, as we know, much of this new development, as far as I understand, is likely to be multi-residential units. And really, right by definition, they have far less landscaping per person in a multi-residential unit than single-family homes. And new development is built with according to the latest and greatest code, meeting our requirements. So they're far more water efficient than the typical red average resident that has, you know, what we still have out there, legacy five gallon of flush toilets, right? That kind of thing. So on average, it's much less. But there is a demand, and that's why the board has asked us to look at no net water.
I see one hand raised. Terry, we can jump back to our speakers.
Okay, Baron Hamel, please. Go ahead, Ms. Hamel.
Thank you again. At the first Marin Water webinar, Mr. Horanstein commented on various grassroots groups doing good work and gave a lovely shout out to my A Drop in the Bucket program, for which I'm extremely grateful. This gave the website a nice pop in viewers, and six more people signed up to receive the weekly newsletter. If I may, I'd like to make a brazen announcement about the website and newsletter again. You'll find it at adropinthebucket.org. There's a Facebook group, A Drop in the Bucket. There's a Facebook page, A Drop in the Bucket. We're also on Nextdoor, A Drop in the Bucket. And we have the newsletter that if you go to the website, adropinthebucket.org, in the comments section, you can email and be and request to be put on the mailing list, which comes out a newsletter every Saturday. So again, thank you again for all you're doing. I'm glad I can support you and do what I can to help raise awareness about what you're doing and what we can do as the public to support you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Baron. And what I did say last time does bear repeating that we can't do this alone. We cannot change behavior in Marin County by ourselves. We need the support of Baron and the new coalition that someone talked about. We need these grassroots efforts, and we highly value them, and we want to support them. So thank you for all the grassroots work in Baron that you're doing. And I did note also, and I'll say it because it just happens to be true. I get a tremendous amount of emails, and we talked about how much is going on here. But when I see the email come in, the weekly update from a drop in in the bucket, I do open it up. I I do find it interesting, and I've learned stuff. So thank you, Baron.
We have one more hand raised. Mr. Robert Archer. Go ahead, Mr. Archer.
I conclude from what you've said, you do not have any cost estimate for the path you have chosen. It is determined based on the chart that you've put forward. And you have reasons stated for not putting it on the bridge instead of under the bridge, basically the bike path. I would recommend strongly that there be some back of the envelope of preliminary cost estimate based upon assumed various lifecycle costings of your water flow options, so we can get a sense of the cost disparity between those two options. And I am not convinced that you're going to experience a thirty-five, twenty-five, thirty-five percent degradation of any rental desalination as stated. Maybe there is experience in Long California that shows that is what has happened, but it simply is hard to accept. Some of your further information that would provide more assurance.
I I can offer a a comment, Mr. Archer, regarding the reliability of the temporary desalination facilities. They're they're just not able to be constructed to the same level at which you would construct a permanent facility. And then as to the costs associated with the Intertie, I think the district's been fairly transparent in terms of the cost range for the project that's been published so far, between sixty and ninety million dollars. And we've shown that at those levels and the current bond rates, the payments on the bonds would be somewhere I don't remember the exact numbers, but between two and three million dollars per year over the next thirty years. So that's the the annual cost for the investment, and then the cost of the water that would go through the pipeline. But it it it's not really meaningful to establish a cost per acre foot and try to guess as to are we going to use it one every three years? Is it going to be three thousand acre feet one year, ten thousand the next, and twelve after, you know, it's just, I mean, we we can tell you that it's our understanding that to get water from the Central Valley over to Marin, we're expecting it to be about the same cost per acre foot or in that range. over to Marin, we're expecting it to be about the same cost per acre foot or in that range as we currently have from Sonoma. If that helps.
If you pick those cost figures that you've given, the sixty million and assumptions on usage and what your range of costs may be from the Central Valley, that comes down to a range of cost of per acre foot. So there is some basis for comparing these alternatives. I don't know why that isn't available to the board for them to make a decision and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. We're going to go now to Mr. Ed Jameson, please. Go ahead, Mr. Jameson.
Thank you. Very, very quickly here. So I appreciate you telling me that the five point four million for three D cell plants may only turn out to be roughly four, call it three point eight to four point three. Let's call it four. That's still a thirty-three percent increase over the eight million gallon pipeline plus two maybe, if not three, from Sonoma. Thirty-three percent or thirty percent increment to our minimal availability is still huge, given that we're fifty percent short of what we consumed this summer. So I appreciate your explicating that. I've learned something, but it's still a thirty or thirty-three percent increase over this de minimis availability you've described. So I wouldn't dismiss the three D cell plants. I know they're expensive, but they are a huge increase over what you're asking us to get by on. But again, thank you for educating me. That's it. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Emma, I don't have any more hands raised. We have no further Q and A here.
Well, you gave us eight minutes. We will take that and appreciate it. I wanted to thank again all our attendees for participating, for engaging with us. This is all about you. We can't do this alone, as I noted. And we will be getting the word out on a subsequent webinar, probably in the next two or three weeks to give, you know, continuous updates for those that are interested in whatever questions you may have. So thank you again.
Oh, Ben, sorry. Someone did raise her hand. If that's okay. Ms. Kristen Newt, please.
I apologize. I was just curious on how, how much our contract has decreased with Sonoma County? You might have asked this already.
Decreased. So I think I just mentioned the cost per acre foot from Sonoma.
Okay.
No, the, I thought, I thought she meant the curtailment.
Oh, oh, oh. Is that what you meant, Ms. Newt? How much are, how much we've been reduced in the amount of water?
Yes.
Right.
We've had this question. Sorry, I'm a volunteer. We've had this question come up and I'm just curious.
Yeah, so our current reduction has been to about twenty percent.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and there are no more hands raised.
Okay. Thank you again. Good night, everyone.